Okay, we can go ahead and call the workshop to order and we'll start with roll call.
Wazner, Krampden.
Here.
Merkier.
Here.
Griswijk.
Here.
Bennett.
Here.
Cox.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Okay, I'm glad to see everybody here tonight. This is a workshop to discuss the roads that we've been dealing with for years now. And we've invited our engineers here from C E Rains. And I guess we can start with, did you want to start, Soho, or do you want us to bring up some questions?
I mean, there's some questions if you want me to start.
Okay.
You can start, but if you have something to share and concerns, you can present them, we can answer them.
Yep, I think we should start with the scaling is the number one thing, I think, that a lot of people are upset about. So if we could maybe have some more detail about the scaling, what's been done to try to fix that and, you know, going forward from there.
Scaling started right after the government had the mandate to lower the coverage.
Mr. Mayor, could you have him stand up and face us so we could hear him?
Can you come to maybe the microphone? Is that, is that on? Randy, okay.
Thank you. Does this turn on? Anyway, scaling started when the government mandated that in order to lower the carbon footprint, they're going to introduce what we call lime powder or lime cement into the mixes. What that did, it kind of caused the concrete to start curing and drying very fast on the surface. By doing so, it cured on the top, but it still was slowly curing on the bottom. So it separated the upper layer, caused the separation. Just like putting a cake in the oven, putting high heat on it, the top will burn or dry out right away, the bottom is not cooked yet. So in two thousand twenty-three, I think, right after we had a five days of rainfall that separated all the pavement. Then right after that, it froze overnight, causing that layer to, by freezing thaw, to separate and peel off. This problem started showing up for us in Allen Park. We got caught, we looked at it, and we got very concerned. Then we started looking around, has anybody else seen this problem? Everybody saw this problem from Westland to Garden City, Dearborn Heights, to Dearborn, to the City of Warren. Actually, the City of Warren was on the news on Channel Seven, if you ever had a chance to watch that. So everybody had that issue and they all went back and analyzed what caused it. Was it the contractor? Was it the concrete mix? It turned out to be a concrete mix coupled with the weather, coupled with the finishing for this paste material on the surface of the concrete. In order to mitigate that, the industry got together, concrete mixes were analyzed by the association. And lots of engineers were involved. They decided that in order to mitigate that, we're going to increase the strength of the concrete to four thousand instead of thirty-five hundred PSI. So they did that. Since then, we had a very good luck in Allen Park and in our cities that we do work with as far as the scaling stopped happening. Just by putting four thousand PSI mixes. Every once in a while, you see pitting in the pavement, pitting you cannot control. It's a matter of the concrete surfaces. It could be a finishing, it could be salt, but again, the scaling part of it disappeared as far as we're concerned. So that's the scaling.
Yes, sir. So I can open it up to council with their concerns to him, and then we can open up to the floor, your guys' concern, anything you may have that we can get some questions answered. Go ahead.
Okay, so I, since, what year was it that the industry got together to change from thirty-five hundred to four thousand?
Right at the tail end of two thousand three, that's when they all started seeing the scaling.
Two thousand three?
Two thousand twenty-three.
Okay, okay, so I had a list that was provided to me with the new concrete pours, the S one four thousand PSI. Our city administrator kind of, or maybe you gave it to us, there was a list of all new pours in Rockwood, Allen Park, Riverview, Flat Rock, Grozeal. So I went and toured those to see about the new mix, and I just compiled some pictures here. For the most part, I don't really know what I'm looking at, but I did see some irregularities. This was on Silver Creek, which was supposed to be less than a year old, I believe. Now, again, this is on my cellphone, so of course, it's difficult to see.
I'm sorry to interrupt real quick, Marcy, but Soho brought up a point also, some of these are patches, correct? So they weren't done through the engineers, is that correct?
These were, if there were water main repairs, we were not involved, so they were done directly with the contractor on the scene.
So would that mean that they wouldn't be the new concrete mix?
I don't know what was specified with the contractor. Most likely, they would be if it's two thousand twenty-four, they all changed to the four thousand.
Okay.
In the list that was provided, these would be the locations, Bobby worked with the contractor, I believe it was G V Cement.
Yes.
And, and it was, in fact, the S one mixed design, which is the four thousand PSI.
Okay.
But a little caveat on that, they were poured very late season. I don't know if Bobby is here.
He's back there.
But.
Late October.
Late October, so that would mean salt trucks and that for, you know, safety of road travel, you would get salt on these patches. Earlier, much sooner than what is ideal for, you know, a paving project.
What is ideal? How much time?
Six to seven months. Usually, you like to get concrete down before you start applying salt to it. Now, let me tell you, Hazel Park would not allow any salt on new pavement. They put signs, this pavement is new, not salted. So they leave it at the contractor, to the driver to be careful and aware of it. But again, you sacrifice safety for pavement, that's the other issue we gotta look at. This issue, let's say this is the most likely is pitting, and I don't know, is this the Lamont location?
This is Riverview, Tall Oaks.
Tall Oaks. This was done by Savoni Cement, who's one of the top contractors around, not G V, so. And he's gonna be looking at that and see what happened there. But these are very close up shots, I mean, when you take a look at close up shots, this is within a foot from the curb face. Sometimes all the salt that the city puts in ends up accumulating there. It moves from the center of the road to the curb line because that's where the drainage is. But again, these are not structural defects.
Sure.
These are all cosmetic defects, similar to the scaling. I want to, I want to go back to the scaling issue. Out of concern with scaling, what we did is we sent core samples, recorded the pavement on Rosedale and Allen Park and sent them to a lab in Chicago. We just wanted to know what type of damage we have. Is it all the way through the pavement section? They came back said it's very superficial, it's on the top, and the structural integrity of the concrete was not impacted. So the strength of the concrete, even at thirty-five hundred PSI, it was still up there, it exceeded thirty-five hundred PSI. There was no concern whatsoever as far as the structural integrity of that concrete in place.
Okay, I did, one of the questions I had for you, there was a twenty-nine thousand square foot pour in Flat Rock. This is it here, Rose Court?
Rose Road.
Rose Road, thank you. If you'll see here is, what am I looking at here?
That's pitting.
Okay, so this is not?
That's not scaling, no.
Okay, and this here?
This one, I think it's the scaling, has a bit of scaling in there, yeah.
So this was poured in October, or I guess, I'm not sure, but.
Later in the season, I think, I would have to look at the records closer to September, I believe, end of September.
Okay, I did interview a gentleman in Grozeal, and I have, I have his, he actually lives, let me find it. But anyways, what I wanted to say was, here, he lives, not this one, excuse me, he lives outside, this is his address. And then this is the cement. Again, I'm not exactly sure what I'm looking at here because I'm not an engineer, but he did tell me that they did not salt the roads in Grozeal. He said that he's retired, he walks his dog every day, he actually slipped twice because they were not salting the roads in Grozeal. And this was one of the newer pours with the PSI, the four thousand. So again, he, you know, he wanted me to relay that information to you that, that he was certain that these roads were not salted.
I would verify that with the D P W director, he's the one responsible. Him and the county are both responsible for salting Grozeal since they're county roads.
Yeah.
And I got a check with D P W, I'm not aware of it, so.
Okay, so the, what I did notice, again, I'm not an engineer, so I don't really know what I'm looking at, but I did, I was highly impressed with the Allen Road, Meek Road, which was a twenty-seven thousand square foot pour from a different supplier. Looks like they're from Messina Concrete was the supplier, and let me scroll back to them. It was absolutely beautiful. I walked in, I looked like a crazy lady walking that street, but it was gorgeous. I was so highly impressed, I actually sent pictures to some of council. Let me see if I can find it, but, so I was just curious how or why, what you felt like the difference was in, say, Allen Park. Could it have been the supplier that they used?
Messina supplied Allen Park, by the way. They supplied Rosedale that scaled.
Yeah.
They also supplied Hard Rock last year on Reef Road that didn't scale. So they're the same supplier. Again, it's, part of the industry was to discuss with every supplier, whether it's Hercules, Messina, Superior, S R M. They're all sat together and discussed these issues, and that's the conclusion they came up with. We can up the strength, hopefully, to prevent the scaling. And that pretty much took care of it.
I mean, I tried to take the worst possible pictures I could find, just, just for comparison, and this was the worst spot, which is nothing but dirt there.
This one here, you're looking at broom finish, what they do is they broom there, so it's not scaling or pitting.
She's saying this is good.
Right, no, yeah, this is, this was, I mean, it was, it was, it was beautiful. I was, I was shocked. And then, of course, you go, you know, so here's the next city I went to, which was why I was looking at the shoulder because I knew that the salt would be gathering there. But, so I was really impressed and just curious, you know, if, maybe if we use that supplier, if we'd have a better outcome.
Or did they get a hold of better cement?
Yeah, it's, it was.
Well, I mean, you can, you can tell the contractor, you want to get concrete from Messina, you can tell him you want to get it from Osborn, you can tell him, you can tell him where you want the supply to be from. I mean, that's not unusual to dictate to them. But again, they all, at one point, faced the same issues, whether it's Messina, Osborn, Hercules, Superior, whoever supplied during that period. They faced that scaling issue. Do they all face every once in a while pitting? Yes. I, I will bet you anything that not even one supplier can give you the ultimate, we call it the ultimate perfect mix. Because it all depends on the salting conditions, weather, time of the year. There are lots of parameters that impact the placement and the finish of the concrete. And sometimes you get a de-cruel finishing of concrete that may cause problems also. We can't, we can't guarantee what we're going to get in the field to do the job. We can watch. From our standpoint, we test it for slump, for temperature, and for strength. The rest, the finishes, we cannot test the finish. We see it looking good when we leave. Two months later, who knows what's going to happen? This is, this is a problem that, there is no guarantee you can test for that till it happens. And sometimes you luck out, just like you got a good painting job on a house and you got a bad painting job on a house. But again, they're all cosmetic, they're not structurally defective.
So these tests that you do, are these onsite while the concrete's being?
They're onsite, when the truck delivers, we check the ticket, we make sure that mixes are the right mixed design that we approved. Before you do anything, we have them submit the mixed design to us. We look at the mixed design. If we don't like it, we'll send it back. And Brent is known about sending mixed designs back. I mean, he harasses the hell out of suppliers, they hate, they hate to even hear his name. Let's put it this way, because he's very particular about what we review and what we're approving. And when they come in, they give us a ticket, says this is the mix that we're going to be applying, so we take the ticket, put it in the file. Meanwhile, the testing company that we hired came out, and they, well, they will do a slump test. Because we don't want the contractor to come in and start adding water to the mix so it can spread much easier, so it doesn't have to work. We don't allow that. So we got parameters on the slump. Temperature gotta be good. We don't want to put very hot mixes because sometimes if the truck gets stuck somewhere and it turns it more than ninety minutes, we don't want to put that mix down, we'll send it back. Because that's not proper to place. We can test also the density of the concrete, and after that's done, we sample for seven day test, fourteen day test, twenty-eight day test. And we test this in the lab by compression to make sure that the mix reaches a twenty-eight day, twenty-eight days intended, for example, four thousand PSI.
Council, Mr. Wazner?
So that's the Lamont?
Yes, this is Lamont, but I'm not sure, I know, I spoke to Vicki about this, and she said she was going to talk to you about it, so I don't know what.
By the way, we weren't involved, again, this is a water main repair that G V did last year for the city, but I called him just because I saw that, and he's going to address this issue. He's going to come out and see what he can do to address it.
Okay, so a couple other questions that I had, I was curious about a warranty. Can you explain to us what's, what warranties are available and what exactly they cover?
A normal warranty is a year after acceptance, and that's spec in the contract documents. When we send the contract out, we make sure the contractor buys insurance and bonds. He buys a performance bond that acts as a maintenance and guarantee bond, and he buys a payment bond to guarantee that he's going to pay, the suppliers pay, whoever supplies them with gravel or concrete. After the job is accepted, when he puts it down, accepted, that a performance bond, which is maintenance and guarantee bond, kicks in for a year after. So if anything goes bad in that year, he's obligated to come back and fix it.
Okay, so when you say if anything goes bad, so if, for instance, if we notice the scaling, what exactly would be covered under the?
The scaling, we lost that war because we right away, when we saw it in Allen Park, went after the contractor, we told them, you need to rip it out and redo it. And he came back, sat with the city and explained to them what happened. Then all of a sudden, all the cities around Allen Park started coming up with the same issues. So when you have an industry-wide problem that happens, you lose your leverage against the contractor. So, hey, I didn't do it. This is how we bought the cement, and this is how we mixed the concrete, and that's how we applied it, like we've been doing it for four years. We don't know what happened. It must be the lime powder that they put in the cement. So that one, we couldn't go back after, and tell him, come back and redo it because it's, it's kind of industry-wide. You cannot fight it in the city, they all will gang up together, and whoever's losing is going to lose for sure. But from there on, when it changed to the four thousand, if something doesn't work right, and I guarantee you that if we test the compression test on the concrete and find out it didn't reach a four thousand PSI at twenty-eight days, it's coming up.
So with.
I've done that in Flat Rock years ago. I made Holloway remove seventy thousand dollars worth of concrete, and they should, because it never met strength. It looked beautiful, but never met strength. So we made them remove it and replace it. That's how we do it.
So is there an additional warranty that can be purchased?
You can. You have to talk to the contractor, and his bonding company will have to extend the bond for another year. And that may cost three percent of the contract price for that, so it's, it's not cheap. But again, if that's what you want for two years.
That would be three percent of the whole job, like a million dollars.
Yeah, so, but again, if, if there is a problem that's going to show up, it's going to show up in the first year. Now, let me go back to M dot jobs and M dot funded work or M dot contracts that are exceeding two million dollars. They require additional warranty in there. I think they require two years warranty on that.
So this, the Olmstead project will have a two-year warranty?
No, because not a million dollars, it's not a two million dollar job.
Two million, I'm sorry, I missed that, okay. And what about a sealant? Would a sealant prevent any of this from happening?
The sealant may, again, there are no guarantees, and we've applied sealants before. The fire stations we placed on Grozeal, right away, as soon as we placed them and they cured for thirty days, we came back and stripped all the curing compound, applied the penetrating sealant by Uco Guard. And the reason is, the fire station salts, and when they put salt, they put an inch of salt on the surface because, again, they need their trucks to come out and keep going, not slip. So that sealant will help in that condition. Sealant will help. I'm not going to say it doesn't help. And there's a cost to it. It's a problem. I mean, just, it's not, it's not cheap.
You'd have to continuously maintain that sealant too.
Yeah, yeah. So it may last two or three years, yeah, you gotta keep reapplying it.
Okay.
And the best sealant is the penetrating sealant. You don't want to glaze it. There are sealants that will glaze the surface, then you lose your skid resistance. Then it becomes a hazard more so than it, than helpful to the driver, so.
I have more questions, but I want to make sure everyone else has time, so I know we're running short on time.
Next one, ask you, is salt that bad for the cement?
They say no, but I say yes. It is bad, especially if the mixes are not cured enough for a year.
When I, I graduated from Central Meska, they use sand. I never understood.
Yeah, up north, they use sand, yes. I use salt on my driveway and I pay the price. I mean, I'm going to have to replace my driveway because of it, because again, it pitted. It was poured in September, and I started salting it for the winter. My curb line disappeared, pretty much flaked off and scaled. So it didn't fare structurally, but it looks terrible, so I have to replace it on the driveway.
Whoever did our street in Meska, they did a great job. There's nothing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
I understand some of these companies have different limestone suppliers, those two.
They do, we review all the sources when we review the mixed designs. Some suppliers, it's a big debate. Someone will try to put crush concrete in the mixes, of course, I agree, we don't approve that. We don't approve fly ash. The state used to force us to use fly ash on state jobs. I never approved fly ash in the mixes because, again, it made the concrete lightweight and caused it to expand much faster and pop at the joints. And I had big debates with the state about that. But again, whenever we did a state job, they said you either use it or you lose your funding, so we, we used it. Some stone is soft, the hardness of it is soft, we don't approve that. If you know the source supplies softer limestone, we don't approve it. Some sands we don't approve because they have lignite. Lignite is some sort of a, like a rusting particle in there that when you put in, all of a sudden, you drive on the pavement, start seeing yellow spots everywhere popping out. So we, we do take as much care as we can to control the material that's used in the mixes. Do we sit in the batch plant and watch them load sand all the time? No, that's why we do the testing, and we do the surface check after and see what, what happens, so.
The scaling was bad enough during the, covered under the warranty, did they have to rip out the whole job?
No, they come back and grind it, they can diamond grind it and seal it. And we may be doing that in Allen Park. I just finished talking to the mayor a couple weeks ago. She doesn't like the surface look, and we told her, it's not structurally defective. But if you don't like the appearance, we can price the grinding. She's against grinding, it's going to cost a couple hundred thousand dollars to grind, but she's all for sealing it, so. We're going to wait till all the surface scales comes off, the top layer comes off, then we're going to seal it, so. That's an option.
How deep does the scaling go?
Barely, I'm going to say less than, no, less than eighth of an inch sometimes, so there is only aggress that end up on the surface. I mean, I've, I've been on my knees just with a knife, just taking those and measuring them, cracking them and testing them, so. This is a very concerning issue. I mean, it doesn't benefit us, it doesn't benefit the cities, it doesn't benefit the contractor, it doesn't benefit the supplier to have these issues. I mean, they don't plan on having scaled pavement, they don't plan on having pitting pavement. But when this happened to them, I mean, they all were up in arms about what, what happened, why did it happen? So contractors sat down with the suppliers and engineers and talked for weeks about it, so.
Got a question?
Sure.
The grade of cement used in our streets compared to the highways, is it the same strength?
Same thing. Well, four thousand, yes. It used to be thirty-five hundred P, they called it thirty-five hundred P M dot mix. Now they want to four thousand, so they're all doing the same thing, trying to mitigate that.
And then it doesn't get recycled, you're going to break up the old stuff, doesn't that get recycled?
It gets recycled, and this is why we don't, I don't like to use recycled concrete, whether it's in the base or in the concrete mixes. I don't like it because dimensions are going to disintegrate. Few years ago, we started having what we call A S R, archelesicic reaction, where you look at the concrete, and if you spray it with a bottle of water, you see just like cells in there on the surface. That was A S R. That was structurally defective because when the freezing thaw cycle hit it, it broke apart and started coming off. You could walk in the joint and put your foot in there and take the whole joint out with your foot. To mitigate that, they started introducing what we call slag cement to the mix. Slag cement was used so that they stopped A S R. Up till the time they started introducing the type one L, which is the lime cement to the mix, then you start having scaling. But again, it's cosmetic, it's not structural. And I have the reports to prove it. I'll share the reports with you if you want to see them from Allen Park.
I want to hear the questions, Walt.
I have a couple thoughts. So all of this analytics and the PSI and this and that, the bottom line is we're going to have to live with this, correct? There's no fix for this.
I mean, the fix is, oh, sorry, you want to answer?
Go ahead, yeah.
The fix is, if you don't like that appearance of it, you can diamond grind it and smooth it out.
Is that feasible?
Price-wise, no. It's too costly to do. Or you can accept the appearance of it, as long as structurally it's not defective, you can accept that appearance. Just to give you an idea what happens with defective pavement, let's talk about M dot. I don't know who drives six nine six, two seventy-five, seventy-five. Does anybody drive this high? I'm probably most of them.
Oh, yeah.
When they did ninety-six, the first year they did a, the contractor came in and just placed the pavement, and all of a sudden, didn't try it right. So they came back and ground sixty-one percent of it. Sixty-one percent of pavement was ground with diamond grinding. Six nine six from Dequender all the way to Grosseback, hundred percent was ground because they didn't try it right. I mean, these are mitigation processes, but there, the contractor was at fault, so the contractor paid for it. Out of the bonus he collected, he collected this big bonus, paid this much, so he's still out of the game. But anyways, the state grooves their finish, is a rake finish, we call it rake finish. You see how they're grooved longitudinally? You don't see pits, you don't see scaling, till you get stuck in traffic. And my wife laughs at me all the time, said, what are you doing? Why are you opening the door? I said, I'm checking the pavement because I get stuck in traffic, so I'm at the stand still. I may as well look and see what's going on. And you open the door and you see it. In front of my office in Riverview, you drive Fourth Street and you see the pits in there. They are hidden in the grooves. You don't really see them driving, but if you stop and look, they're there. That's M dot job, that's county, county work. I mean, nobody is protected from these issues, whether it's a county, whether it's a state, what's the federal government, whether it's an airport. Few years ago, they had to replace the whole metro airport runway, forty million dollars worth of concrete, so.
Follow-up question?
Sure.
So the street that I live on is in dire need of repair. I mean, we're almost back to the horse and buggy days. Now, if they come in and tear that up, what guarantees are there that this issue isn't going to be repeated on, on our street, on my street, as opposed to the street adjacent to ours?
All I can tell you what I can do to make sure that the mixes are correct mixes, I cannot control the contractor. So the year warranty with the contractor, if that happens within the year, he has to come back and fix it.
If it scales within the year?
If it scales within a year, he has to come back and fix it.
But not the pits?
So as soon as it starts scaling, with this, in one year?
You gotta report it, yes.
You'd have to come back and?
They gotta come back and do something. They don't, they may not remove it and replace it, but they may treat the surface, grind it or do something to it.
I'm probably discussing a little bit about my age, but I grew up in M dot.
Okay.
And the roads that I lived on, the road that I lived on was poured in the nineteen forties. It still exists. It's not, there's some patches now, but they never had to replace that. There was no scaling. There was, you know, no problems with their cement. What is the difference back then compared to now?
We don't know, but all I can tell you is, from the first war to the second war, the concrete was much better and stronger. If you see any failure, you'll see the paste disappear and you'll see just the stones on the top.
Right, did they use more stones though? Didn't they use a little bit more stones or like a softer stone, like a rounder?
No, they actually, they didn't use crushed stone at the time. They used mostly quarried stone, which is rounded. No, they actually, what, they didn't use crushed stone at the time. They used mostly quarried stone, which is rounded stone. That's why you see the surface polished, but doesn't fail. I don't know what the secret was. Maybe they put more cement than now. I don't know if they did more than four thousand PSI or what. But I've seen lots of these roads like this that last forever, while the newer roads from the mid-sixties to the eighties faced the ASR failure, which is alkalistic reaction, and that's what caused them to just disintegrate and fall apart.
It just seems to me that over time, things should get better, not worse.
You think so? Well, I mean, I I can qualify that and tell you they could get better if people invest money. There are polymers, there are additives you add to the concrete, there are sealants you add in the mixes now, but it is cost prohibitive. To what level do you wanna spend money to make sure the road stays forever?
It'll last for years, it's like twenty years.
It's, I mean, but sometimes you take chances on them and they do that, so. There are mixes that you put between the polymers and you put the sealant in the mixes, you're adding about twenty percent to the mix. Does that make sense?
It's gonna just crumble and then?
Well, there's no guarantee it's gonna crumble. I mean, scaling was an issue. Pitting, I would not see that as a structural issue. I see it as a cosmetic issue. Can we live with that? Shouldn't happen? No. I I I tell you, it should never happen. We, nobody wanna see pity, nobody wanna see scaling. But I don't know how much you can control the contractor, then see the mixers. We can control them. All we can do is make sure that when you specify things, they implement it, and we don't have any control over their workmanship. Sometimes you get an A crew, sometimes you get a D crew, I don't know.
So how, uh I'm just gonna stop you because the council meeting has to start at seven. So I think, well, I know you have to go because you have a matter in Riverview. Brent's gonna stay on, but are are you gonna stay on or?
I I have to.
You're going too? Was there any more last minute questions then before we, yep?
I I I didn't come here for this reason, but I've listened to him and I've been a contractor for over forty years. I have some very good friends who are contractors in cement. I'm not a cement contractor. And I speak, I've been speaking with them and seeing their work, and he tells this one particular one, and most of you probably might know him. He says that the government put restrictions on the mixing of the concrete. There was a, there was a dusting issue or something, and they compromised the cement by putting whatever or taking whatever out, and I don't know the specifics of it. And he says, I may lose my business because I'm getting all these lawsuits because this concrete is falling to pieces. And I didn't pay attention to it, but going over, like you said, Rosel, Hawthorne over there, all that cement there is not six months old and it's crumbling. I said, that sounds pretty dangerous. And so what do what do they do? He says, all the concrete companies now, and I'm all of them, some are taking it into their own hand. They're starting to mix it the way they need, it needs to be done, and they're bypassing some of the government restrictions. But I said, what about the stuff that they use on the commercial buildings? He says, Larry, this is, that's a, that's a big issue. Think about the concrete that goes into the bridge down there, and then six months to a year. I mean, this concrete I'm looking at isn't six months old and it's disintegrating. And then I start to look at it all over. And he says, that's gonna be an issue. This stuff's six month, what about ten years down? Like all these buildings, this concrete? He says, I have no idea how it's gonna have, what the concrete they're putting in the last year is just garbage. And it's not, it's not your contractor's fault, and they can't guarantee it. Now they won't. You get a guarantee, you are lucky, but you will not get it, because they know.
Horton is a private road, by the way. Horton is not a, it's a private road. So there's no control except between the contractor and uh Horton.
No, I'm I'm just saying, where they get the concrete.
But when you look at structural concrete for bridges and bridges, that's a totally different mix. Strength wise, it's way up. Anyways, if there are any questions, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Just one quick question on the standard. So the standard, is that a Michigan standard or is that a federal standard?
It's a federal mandate.
Federal mandate, okay. It's not a Michigan mandate.
And the dusting is the type one L we discussed, so.
I don't know the numbers.
If there are questions, please collect them, mayor, and submit them to us. Between Brent and I will answer, and writing will give you a report. But I'm sorry, I gotta run. I have a meeting in Riverview to attend, City Council, so.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming. I would like, if you guys do have questions, we could get some paper and pen, write them down so I can get answers.
Or email them.
Or you can email them to me if you want. Uh any questions at all, because, yeah, go ahead.
So, at the end of the day, is what the city or these guys saying, us residents that live on the roads and have the scale, we're just screwed. Our home price, the LGR, the lady just on the road from me just sold her house. It was on the market for eight months. Every person I looked at, it said it was the roads and the property taxes. And that's not gonna cost me money. I have to stare at this road because it's just cosmetic. It looks terrible.
It, I agree with you, I agree.
Over each, as residents screwed.
I sent a lot, I sent an email today, Debbie Dingle, speaking about this and hoping and.
I already have been in contact with her office and Cal too.
Maybe we can get, you know, cause Governor Whitmore was been saying, let's fix these roads, right? So maybe, I said, maybe we should start with the quality of the cement that you're providing or we're we're getting. So maybe we can get some there, talking to our government.
Let's, 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 let's approve the agenda. Okay, we we can continue this under the, under the agenda. We gotta get the meeting started, and then we'll go right into it, okay? We're gonna go right into this. Okay, let's uh call the meeting to order, and we'll start with roll call, and we'll go right back into this, okay?
Cox?
Yes, here.
Bennett? Merker?
Yes.
Johnson?
Here.
Crampton?
Yes.
Wazner? Griswold?
Here.
Okay, we can stand due to pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, real quick, we can uh do the approve of the agenda, then we'll jump into public discussion, and we'll get back to.
Approve the agenda is presented?
Support. Crampton?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Wazner?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Merker?
Yes.
Okay, right, we're we're taping, so people at home are watching. I wanted to get us into the meeting so they they know what's going on. Um so we'll go on to public discussion, right, on the agenda, and we'll go, continue a discussion about the roads. You were talking, sir, I didn't get to hear everything you said. Yeah, yeah.
I was saying, what about the roads?
Oh, yeah, you, do you step on up and just give your name and address? We're in a regular meeting now. She's just gonna mark it down.
Tim Nichols, two zero one one five Candace. Part of Candace got done, but two, two houses, houses down kinda stopped, like, way back then. We gotta pick cement out of our drive, our grass every time before we mow. It's ridiculous. I could bring in a bucket full of it every.
I'm on Herzog, I, the worst street, worst street, I, I know, I'm well aware.
Is that, are they into plans to even do anything about that? I'd take a scaling road.
Well, I'm gonna get into the HUD funding soon, uh to be poured, and I have all that in, within the meeting also. Uh to go back to the scaling though, I mean, who, do you, do you have any suggestions, sir? I mean, we listen to the engineers and that's who we pay them professionally. I know nothing about cement. I'm not an engineer, and I understand it looks terrible. And we can investigate costs for sealing and scaling. We can certainly get quotes on all that stuff and see what it is. We're a small city. We don't have a big budget. The money that we get for these roads are usually grant money, you know, so we hit, match a portion of it, but they're paying for it. This is not coming out of our fund. Um but if the residents want quotes on this stuff, we can go with these uh, with the contractors and see what these prices are, because I don't have any idea either what they would be.
My question was, or my statement, I guess, I just want answers.
Sure, why don't you step on up, 'cause I can't hear you two.
I'm just tired of you kicking the can down the road.
Sure, if you could just say your name and address.
Jason Teaster, two zero zero five six Lazott. So, I just want answers. I mean, if you don't have it, then you go up, like she said, she emailed, you know. Somebody has to give us answers. We're sick and tired of this. And I'm not saying it to you, I understand, you know what I mean? I know where you're at. You're right down for me.
Yeah, no, I really understand.
Yes.
Uh Cal Kirchen, who is one of the, in their office, was supposed to make it tonight, um but he came sick this morning. And I did call him. He had to have an update for us anyway, so I said, that's fine, just stay low, but he, we're in contact with them. I know she emailed to. Uh we're looking for a solution, really are. Like I said, you, Ice Street is probably the worst. It's terrible.
It's the newest.
Yeah.
Out of the city.
Right, newer, yeah.
Right, out of the city.
But you're right, it brings out property values. It's disheartening looking at it. My fellow uh comrades that ride their bikes on there are getting hurt. I don't want anybody to get hurt over there. It bothers me. I see it every day.
That's my next thing. My son, you know, he's got a new little e-bike, and he's flying around that thing. I'm like, stay away from, you know, all this stuff. It's terrible.
Sure.
Um even with the scaling, and I know he said that we have to wait for the whole top layer to come off, like he said, with the buckets of concrete, I'm still having that with the scaling. You walk by my house right now, look at my curb, I got about that thick of just concrete down there. I'm sick and tired of, you know, getting it out of my lawn.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? I don't know, and I don't know, and I'm not saying this in any other way, but uh, you know, if a kid does fall and get hurt on a city road, it's like, is that another, like, fear for the uh? Uh like a fear for the city, you know, lawsuit wise, that's another thing, because that also comes, you know, out of our taxes and stuff.
Yep.
So that's like.
It's always a concern.
Yeah, I just want answers, man. You know, I'm always hounding on Facebook.
That was why we wanted the engineers specifically to come in. He's, he's pretty much runs the company, and he's been doing this for forty years, and this is what we pay these people for too, you know, as a city.
That's the scary part. That's what we pay them to do, and that's what we're getting. But I appreciate, you know, your time and everything. I just, that's my thing. I want answers. I'm sick of the kicking the can down the road to the next person.
I agree.
You know, and uh that's it, that's it, I guess.
I appreciate you stepping up and talking. If anybody else would like to step up, I'd love to hear the concerns. Come on up, sir.
One quick question. Are you gonna talk about a schedule for the roads, the new roads, put them in?
We, we, under the, you mean with the HUD money?
Yeah, on your, talk about the HUD money. Did we get it? Two years ago, we were told you're supposed to get seven hundred.
Yep, yep, it's in my updates at the end of the meeting. It's in my update. All right. I'm gonna specifically talk about the HUD money.
Okay.
So any more questions about the scaling, the cement, anything we heard from the engineers? Tiffany, come on up. Do you say your name and your address?
Tiffany Reese, two zero one one three Candace. So um I just, in between now and when things actually get done, we need to be mindful too about the patch work. So I have a seventeen year old son that has to park on the street. And um during the winter time, there's oftentimes he can't because of the patch job that was done. It collects so much water that then we get a solid sheet of ice. And then when it's not ice, it was water. And he literally could not even stretch his leg out far enough to get out. He had to back up and he couldn't even park near our driveway. So we need to be mindful too. I mean, the patch is like this above the cement, and it's, of course, every joint because that's how bad our streets are, right? So, but when it's that high, then it's also a problem for drivers. It's a problem for when people have to park on the streets and things like that too, so just to be mindful. Um cause not only can we fill buckets with cement chunks, but we can also fill it with patch work as well. And being right there on the corner of Candace and here in Riverma- uh.
You're talking about the patch that they're dumping in, DPW, okay.
Yep, it's pretty thick, so, thank you very much.
You hear our concerns?
Yep.
All right. Anybody else about these, this issue right now, the scaling, uh the sealant, the grinding, any, any other concerns or questions, please step up? Do you say your name and your?
Dan Reese, Candace two zero one one three. The engineer kept saying the scaling is not structural. But what happens when it fills up with water, turns to ice, and it pops? It's just getting worse and worse, right? Eventually, it's gonna be um a structural problem. And the more scaling you have, the more issue you have. So maybe we might, and we may have already looked into the, the grinding.
Yep, we can get quotes for all that stuff, bring it back and discuss it. We, I have no problem doing any of that because I have no idea what the cost would be on something like that, but yeah, that'd be great. We can, we can do that. Anybody else? Okay. One last time, anybody else? We all good with this issue right now? I'm gonna move on, okay? Please, please speak up, yeah, okay.
Does anybody wanna leave? Does somebody wanna leave that, that, that stayed for the whole meeting?
Yeah, if anybody, if anyone wants to leave, you don't have to stay for the whole meeting, so up to you guys. Um we're gonna move on to the public discussion for items on the agenda. Is there anybody with questions on public item, or uh public discussion with items on the agenda? I don't, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just didn't know that would be a good time for him to ask this question about the HUD, since it's on the agenda?
Where's that on your agenda?
You said the HUD, or it's not on your?
It's under my updates.
Your updates, okay.
Yes, my updates, so. Any hands? Okay, I see no hands, so we'll move on to the action agenda.
Motion to approve the action agenda A and B, which is council minutes of April second, twenty twenty-five, and council.
Griswold?
Yes.
Merker?
Yes.
Crampton?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Wazner?
Uh we'll move on to the reports from the city officials. We'll start with the police department's chief Kraus.
Good evening, mayor and council. Uh one item on the agenda for myself tonight, and that would be the monthly report for the month of March. During March, we responded to four hundred thirteen incidents resulting in twenty-eight arrests. We issued fifty-seven traffic violations for the month, and we provided a mutual aid a total of thirteen times.
Motion to accept and file a police activity report for the month of March twenty twenty-five, dated April third, twenty twenty-five. Go forward.
Merker?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Crampton?
Yes.
Wazner?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Questions, council? Thank you. Thank you. Uh we'll move on to the authority department. Chief Merker?
Good evening, mayor and council. I also have the um fire report for March. Uh we did have one building fire in the city. It was a garage uh over on Candace. We had uh twenty EMS calls, forty, or three auto eight calls and four other calls during that month.
Motion to receive and follow the monthly fire department report, March twenty twenty-five.
Support. Johnson?
Yes.
Crampton?
Yes.
Merker?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Wazner? Bennett?
Uh next item I have um is a request to pay downriver truck and bus for repairs to the engine and the ladder. Uh they were brought in for their DOT inspections, um and these problems were found during uh those inspections. Repairs to the engine were two thousand seven hundred and eighty-one dollars, one cent, and for the ladder was three thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and eighty-three cents. Uh the front shocks on the ladder still need to be replaced, but they're on back order, so there will be, I will bring those. Um to that, that cost is one thousand eighty-eight forty-eight. Um if you want, I can make a separate motion for that to be paid now or when it comes in, whichever you please.
Just do it all together? Okay.
Make a motion to pay downriver truck and bus repairs listed in item six A.
Wazner? Crampton?
Yes.
Merker?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Bennett? Cox?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And then also, um, there's just the uh line item transfer to pay for said repairs.
Motion to approve the line item transfer of five thousand five hundred dollars to cover costs of repairs listed in six A.
Support. Cox?
Yes.
Bennett? Merker?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Crampton?
Yes.
Wazner? Griswold?
Yes.
And the final item I have is a rec- um a request to add Crystal, Christopher LaFlore, Jacob Rose, and Janelle Roberts uh to become probationary members of the fire department. Uh Janelle and Jacob will be, uh if approved, would start the EMT class next week in Gibraltar. And Chris will be um looking for class to find with his scheduled as a police officer.
Make the motion. Go forward.
Are any of those um people here tonight?
No, they're not.
One of them is our police officer.
Yes, yes, the new ones. I didn't know if he was on duty tonight, or today.
Crampton?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Wazner? Johnson?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Merker?
Yes.
I'd like to welcome all three of them to the team, let them know the council welcomes them.
I'll do that. Any other questions?
No.
Great, thank you.
Okay, we don't have a treasurer's report tonight, so we'll go on to the Department of Public Works, Director Warren.
Good evening, mayor and council. I got a couple things on the agenda. First one's a fund transfer for items listed for the amount of twenty-four thousand five hundred.
Merker?
Yes.
Bennett? Johnson?
Yes.
Crampton?
Yes.
Wazner? Cox?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
And the second item I have is water meters, five eighths three quarters. Requesting purchase thirty of them for the amount of nine thousand seven hundred twenty-three and sixty cents.
Um just a quick question. How many um more meters are we expecting to replace? Um, just a quick question. How many um, more meters are we expecting to replace? I remember, I think at the beginning of the year, you said there's quite a few.
Oh yeah, you're looking, I'm probably a third done, so we're looking to six hundred more?
Okay.
At least.
Bennett? Griswick?
Yes.
Merkier?
Yes.
Crampton?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Katz?
Yes.
Wazner?
And the third thing I have is requesting permission to get a new fuel tank for my two thousand nine, two thousand seven, F seven fifty, right where the straps are, steel tank, they finally rusted through. And I found one for one thousand one hundred and twenty six and forty seven cents and I got two other quotes on there.
Make the motion.
Thank you for reaching out for those other quotes.
Oh yeah, I'm always, I'm gonna save a dollar. I mean.
Johnson?
Yes.
Crampton?
Yes.
Merkier?
Yes.
Griswick?
Yes.
Katz?
Yes.
Wazner?
Yes.
Bennett?
Any questions? Thank you.
There's some seats in front of you guys that wanna stand. Okay. You're a teacher, you're supposed to like the front row. Alright, we'll uh, move, move on to the consideration items. Um, and the first one would be to, to untable. Or take off the table, the Homestead bid, uh, that was tabled at the last meeting.
Amy, you seconded, so you need to take it off the table.
Okay.
Okay, motion to take off uh, from the table, seven A, T E D F, category B, fund grant. Bid award from the regular council meeting on April second, twenty twenty five.
Support.
Um, so I had a couple of questions about, oh, vote first, sorry, thank you.
Griswick?
Yes.
Katz?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Wazner? Crampton?
Yes.
Merkier?
Yes.
Bennett?
Um, a couple of questions about the, back to where we were. So I appreciated the engineers coming in and talking to us. I'd like to know a little bit more about or discuss with council, an extended warranty. I, I don't know if we got the price on that or what that would look like. Um, because a lot of the scaling, I was confused because he, at first he said the scaling wasn't covered, but then a resident had asked. And the, and, and the engineer said that the scaling was covered, um, if it happened within a year. So I know um, the street I live on, the scaling happened magically right after a year. It seemed like it was about like a year and two months. And um, it was such a, s- such a disaster to have it happen right after that and the warranty was up. So my suggestion would, would be, and I, I don't know if we reached out to get a quote or a price on a warranty, but I'd love to see that. If this is something that is possible for the M D, M DOT grant, because I know it is a grant, um, for that to happen. I don't know who can speak on that.
Well, I think the contractor, we'd probably have to go back to the contractor, what a warranty would look like, the price for that.
He'd have to pay it, is what he said, and when he was up there. The engineer said he, we'd have to go back to him and see if he would buy another. But the grinding, sounds like it might be something.
Yeah, I know, I know that's a separate issue, just because we're just looking specifically right now at the new, the new pore. And then my other question would be, is um, the supplier, I did call him, um, I did call um, the person who had won the bid to get information on the supplier and we just, we missed each other on the phone, so I never did um, find out who his supplier was. Um, so I would be interested to know that as well. Um, so for me, those are some questions I again need to answer before I could vote yes, but that's my.
I would say most contractors are giving you like a workmanship warranty, where she said that, you know, like they did a patch and there's like a, however many inches of water. So like that will fall under the contractor, that's the work that you put down, you know what I mean? And it's not holding up. So the mix where you guys are saying that it's pitting or it's doing these things, these are things that are done with the material that they're using. I wouldn't say that these are really things that are falling on the contractor, they're more on the material itself.
Sure, and a- again, in my, when I, my very limited scope of research that I did, I just went and toured those, those pores. Um, many of them that use the same, we were supplied who their, uh, we were supplied with the information, who their, who they got their concrete mix from. It seemed that only one road that I saw was, was in pristine condition and, you know, again, that's still subjective, but um, so I would be curious to know if they would be using that supplier. That would be important to me to know with this amount of money that we're, that we'll be spending, so.
But they could have used that supplier and it could have been good at that time. That's, that's the issue. It's just like you're going to get an outfit and this one's bad and this one's good.
Did you mention that it rained for like five days straight?
All of these pores were done within the last year that I toured and with the new four thousand PSI. So you saw in some of those pictures in the workshop, that, that some of the pitting or pitting or scaling or whatever the correct terms or what it was that we were looking at, were drastically different from road to road, which was really from supplier to supplier. Uh, I did not provide the information of the supplier just for, you know, privacy sake, but again, the, the it seemed to be that certain suppliers had different outcomes with their, with their concrete pore.
Is there any questions from the public? Come on up.
Aren't we supposed to use the same kind of pixel?
No, well, we think variation, otherwise it would all be the same. I mean, they, they can vary.
Like he was saying, they're starting to be getting their own hands and fixing it.
Just name and address, please.
Here on Meadows Drive. I just have a question about this Homestead pore. What is it and is it costing the city any money?
No, it's, it's done to an M dot grant.
So it's not costing us a dime?
Go ahead, city administrator can speak on that also. We do have a match.
We're getting a hundred and thirty three thousand dollars through the grant. And the city will cover the rest, that should be about fifty percent. The bid came in at two sixty seven, so we will, the city would be paying the other hundred and thirty three thousand.
Two sixty seven four is what it came in at, yeah.
Why are we paying for that road when the road's in our subdivision? We've been paying for them for ten years now. I paid four hundred dollars in the last two years through my taxes, and I'm assuming just about everybody else in here did. And nothing was done in the last two years.
You talking about the millage?
I'm talking about the millage and the roads.
Yep.
And it's strictly for roads that was set up for.
Yes.
Now, we're going outside our subdivision and outside the guidelines of what that, from what I remember, what that uh, passed, that um, legislature passed to do something different with our money.
So, I looked into this because I knew this question was coming specifically. Um, the, the, we have been doing a road, uh, roadwork with our millages. The mill, the millage was broken, they broke up the city into four, four sections.
Exactly.
Each section gets a determined amount each year for their cement work. That varies, depends on state, on uh, tax value and what, what comes in, you know? That is not a standard amount. We have been doing a bunch of those repairs. The HUD grant was applied for in twenty twenty two, okay? The seven hundred fifty thousand dollars that we're talking about. Uh, and there is a, there's an asset uh, management study that was done, you know, it's, it's called a Pazer study that was done also. Where identified the worst streets in the city. Our streets mainly and a couple others, okay, and it's, it's on, we can, it's all, we can show you the, the paperwork. Those streets were written with that HUD application, okay? Now HUD has strict guidelines and when you write for that, those are the streets that have, that HUD money has to be used for. You can't use any other money, that HUD money for anything else. So, from twenty twenty two and this HUD money, and I was fighting with the feds, that's been earmarked for all of these. That's why I'm trying to get it pulled back down to us as soon as possible, because that's the money that has to be used for our roads. The millage money's been being used for other roads. Now, last year, we didn't use a lot of that millage money because we have to match a portion of the HUD grant also, so we're gonna use that money to match that portion to fulfill our need to have all the roads done. So when you do the application for the HUD, those roads were listed, hers, uh, Candace, all the ones in our sub and all the other ones that, that are on there. Forget I can trade. Got it, okay. Those have to be used uh, with the HUD money. So that's why we're waiting on this HUD money to get these roads going and start doing them.
But you're doing Homestead first?
Homestead is a wholly different grant. That's not through the federal government, that is through the state. That's an M dot grant. So it's totally different. It's funded differently, it's given out differently. We don't get to say which roads that we're gonna get funding for. The state or the feds, uh, just determine when we get the funds released.
But you're gonna have to spend our tax money to the tune of a hundred and thirty three thousand dollars to fund that. Where's that coming from?
We have road money, that's, is, is that correct, in the road fund?
So the, the city has their matching portion for both projects. So the money that is from the millage is set aside, or the portion is set aside for the roads that are going to be fitted with HUD grant. So we have that portion is set aside already to match that, the amount that we have to match on that. There's another match for the Homestead money, and that also comes from the millage money for that district and also from the N dot funding that we get every year. So it's just the timing of when the grants are, we're able to get the money, is why the Homestead project is moving forward faster. We're getting grant money from a state source as opposed to the federal source, and that's just the timing of dealing with the state government as opposed to the federal government.
So do we have the money from the federal government?
Well, I might as well just get into it now. Um, the HUD money, right?
Whatever it is.
Go ahead.
When you put roads down, you can't add or take off.
Right.
That's why we've been cold patching and leaving them up. I can't go through and fix two hundred feet and we don't get the money.
Because it's specified in that application, that's where the money has to go. And, yes, um.
It's been three years. Guzzi mentioned this before he left, that we had that money, they even applauded Debbie Dingell for hav- helping us out. Now we got a new president and that'll go right down the tubes. That'll be next.
So some, some quick facts about the HUD money and this whole process that's been going on since twenty twenty two. It was submitted in twenty twenty two. During that time, there had to be several studies done, an environmental study, that it had to do with historical study to make sure there was no ancient bones on, I mean, ridiculous stuff the feds wanted done, all these studies. Um, since Vicki's been here, what, about a year now, we've had four different supervisors on our account through the HUD. Now this is the federal government we're talking about, four different supervisors. So each time that we would submit all the paperwork that we had, there would be another lady that she would email or call and they would say, oh, I don't have this document, this document. So she would have to resubmit that again, again, federal government. Um, so they've, she submitted many times, four or five times, these paperwork that we, over and over. Well, recently HUD decided to go from paper to electronic portal. So now all of our documents had to re-be, go into this electronic portal again. So that had to be done by the federal government. So you can understand the frustration that I'm seeing too, because it's, it's at the top level, they're not, they're not doing their jobs. And the last, you spoke to Kimberly today, yesterday?
I know who they're today. I'm in contact with her several times to leave, telling her what the status of the grant is, if there's any more documentation needed from us and how to expedite um, this process to be able to start our project.
We were told in the winter, you're all set, you're, the funds are gonna be released by spring. That's what we were told. Bobby was on that call with us. Here we are, still fighting with them. I called Dingell's office, I've talked to Cal who works out of there, I talked to him three hours ago. He said they've reached out to the federal and to the local contact and haven't heard back at all, so that was, I reached out to him yesterday to try and get an answer for this meeting today. So we're dealing with the federal government. This is my answer, unfortunately. I wish I had more for you, because nobody's more frustrated than me. I mean, we're being told we had this money, here we are, three years into this and it hasn't been released to the city yet.
I agree. So, but what else you're telling me right now, it's what I'm hearing is that there's gonna be nothing done with the roads this year.
I'm not saying that.
Well, I know you won't, but.
These funds before, you know, within the next month or two, then we're gonna get, go out to bid and start pouring in, in the summer.
So there is a schedule right now to do all these?
There is a schedule. The Pazer study, yep. And well, the, the order is probably most likely determined by the contractor, okay? If there's a ten streets here and two at this side of the city, they have to move their equipment back and forth. They may choose to do this chunk first and then move whichever way it is, so yes, there's, there's an order, but the contractor has some saying that also.
There's an order, but not a schedule.
Right, not a schedule, I'm sorry. No, I don't have a date.
Not till we get the money.
When they tell me the funds are gonna be released, I'll first to come to all you guys.
And there's no way to spend the money that we've already paid to get some of that work done? Because we weren't, we were getting some done based on what the, the original budget was. And then on top of it, what, what the, uh, what we were contributing. Like I said, my four hundred dollars that I gave, probably everybody just about in the city gave, and nothing's been done for two years.
Well, again, these roads are earmarked for this grant. We have to use this money for this grant. That's why Bobby said they, they've just been passionate and keeping it up, because till the money comes in, we can't tear these roads out and redo them. We can lose the grant money.
We've got a matching.
We're not gonna lose that money.
We gotta put some matching funds in.
I understand that.
Spend it on your roads now if we don't, and then we get the grant, we don't have.
And we lose the grant money if they find out.
What if they don't give us that grant push?
Yeah.
Well, nothing's guaranteed.
Your money is still there.
Nothing's guaranteed, you're right. But we've been approved for all the documents and all, everything that, since Vicki's been talking to them. They said it's a matter of approval. That's the wording that they're using. It's just a matter of, of approval to release the funds.
So then I can expect every road in our subdivision to be done. Perfect.
I would have to look at the Pazer study, but most of those roads.
Well, I mean, well, the ones that aren't in the Pazer, buddy, then you could spend money on.
Yes, Vicki, go ahead.
Are all on the list to be done. Uh, and there's sections in there, it's not the whole world, but there's sections. And this information is posted on uh, our Facebook. I know that everybody has Facebook, but we certainly need to get people a copy if they wanna see the list.
Because when they first started, they did like two lanes or two uh, sections out of four. And the two are still good, but the two outside ones are terrible.
Sure, yep.
There was a learning curve.
I, I know everybody's frustrated and I'm frustrated too, cause it falls on me, and I'm trying my best, and my staff is trying their best to fight with these feds every day to get this money released. They say it's just a release, it's, that's the wording they're using. To me, that's easy, just release my funds to me. You know, my paperwork's been approved, everything passed the studies.
And we're not blaming, we're not blaming anybody up here, but the, the point that could be improved on is that it's communicated to the, I watch your meetings and I hear Homestead. Hmm, what's that? I, I, and we don't hear anything about what it is, why it is, because we're all sitting in there with chunks of concrete on our grass.
I've been talking about the HUD money in, in the projects for several meetings, now several months, so.
On your things?
Yeah, on at these meetings, yeah, so.
Guzzi talked about seven hundred and seventy five thousand dollars three years ago too.
Well, I understand, but this is, this is the first time I've seen this many people here since I've been mayor, which is good to me, because you can come here and I wanna hear what your concerns, so I know what to work on. Nobody comes to the meetings, nobody tells me what's going on, so I have to update and hopefully they're watching on the TV, you know?
Maybe you should post.
Appreciate it when you come.
Post some uh, emails, cause that's a whole lot easier than having to come to a meeting and. Pardon me?
The meetings are.
No, I know the meetings are, I'm saying, emails.
To who?
Put yours on there, Marcy's, everybody put your emails online. I haven't, I haven't been able to find them.
Tom, do you mean our email addresses?
Yeah, your email addresses, so we can email you.
I think it's on the site.
My phone number's on there, you can call me. You can knock on my door if you want, you know where I live. I make myself available the best I can, I really do. But yeah, email me, so I know, that'd be great.
Like I said, we're not, I'm not blaming anybody that's on, up here.
But we're all frustrated as residents here, because we pay these taxes and, and this stuff's not getting done. I totally understand that, I do.
So is there any alternatives, you said?
Two.
Two. Voicing our frustration, channel seven, channel two, channel four, what?
They're not gonna get these funds, these any quicker. This is a federal, this is housing and urban development, it's federal funding. Nobody's gonna Dingell's office, I would hope, could do something. That's why I called there, so I'm waiting for them to, to kinda punch a little bit. Somebody a little higher than us.
So maybe we could call, I'll call Debbie?
Yeah, call everybody in Lansing, that'd be great.
Or even put an email out to our governor. I, I, I did email all of the senators, um, and uh, two house representatives that cover this district that, that we were given the information for with the new pore for the four thousand PSI. And I let them know that this is ridiculous. Someone's gotta be held accountable or something's gotta be done about this. I mean, we're not the only city that's, that's dealing with this. It is, it's absolutely tragic that we have to um, basically put up with it, like, like the other gentleman said, is like. Like, like the other gentleman said, is like we just have to deal with it and I don't think that that's, that's, um, that's what our dollars should represent.
Well, everybody in the state of Michigan.
Yes, yeah.
And I'm not pigeonholed, Debbie, I've, I've also reached out to Kimberly, all, all kinds of people, say, hey, can you push this along for us? Can you make some calls for us in the fed, or to the HUD office? See if you can get this stuff done, this has been going on for three years, it's ridiculous. So.
All right, thank you for your time.
Oh, anytime, anytime. Anybody else, please step up, come on up.
Name and address?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Walt Supper, two zero zero eight three Herzog. Um, I think we're beating, uh, the drum here quite a bit about the roads. My concern are, is if they do ours, our road, are they gonna do it like they did Candace? Piecemeal, they did it so far, then they stop. And just like Tom mentioned, uh, uh, here on Meadow, same thing, they did the entrance and we got, you know, paths on both sides. Uh, and I remember a, a meeting that the, the city previous administration, did they not have uh, an outside consulting firm go around and determine which roads were in need of repair or who does that?
That's called the Paser study that I mentioned. And we have a, uh, it's, it's a plan that's done every, uh, two to three years, I think, Vicki?
Every three years?
Every three years.
And that's a regional study, that's not specific to Rockwood, it's usually done as a regional study.
And our engineers do the stuff, they, yeah, they're involved with that study. That's the Paser study and it, and I can show you guys the paperwork, it assigns a numbering to how bad the road is from good to bad. Our roads are at a two, you know, pretty much all on our side and then up to ten. So, and those are the roads that were earmarked for this money, that's why we want to get this money so bad.
Well, with all due respect, whether it was last year or the year before, I think the guy missed Herzog because it was bad last year, the year before, and it's three times worse this year. And it's getting worse. And all I can do is advise the residents and myself, you better buy an extra lawnmower blade because there's rocks everywhere.
Yeah.
And, and it, it's not getting any better.
I agree.
And you know, and we continually, just like was stated earlier, we hear about HUD. And I know a little bit about that, uh, in another venue. However, if this continues with HUD, you know what, I'm pretty close to calling Hank on TV, whatever station he's on. And let's get him involved, let's get the media involved, let him come out and interview you, interview the residents.
Feel free to call.
Oh, no, I know, thank you, yeah. Because it, it, it's, you know, like the lady on the corner, you know, was complaining on Facebook that she couldn't sell her home for X number of months because of the road conditions. And I'm sure there's a lot of other people that are in the same predicament. So I thank you for your time, I know it's out of your hands and you're doing the best you can, I think.
It falls on me, so, yeah.
Yeah, it does.
I'm, I'm the head here, so. I have to, I have to take action the best I can. And, uh, go ahead.
I just wanted to bring up, when it does happen, hopefully soon, curb to curb, one side at a time, so we can get emergency vehicles through, it's gonna be tough. Some guys won't go parking driveways, you're gonna have to carry groceries for two weeks. But there's no more section in it or yourself, it's gonna be.
Do you hear that, Walt?
All done.
It's curb to curb, all done.
I told you for three years.
What's that?
I said I've been talking for three years.
Yeah, it's gonna be curb to curb all the way down. Anybody else, please step up, let's hear your concerns, anything you have?
I have a question.
Yeah, come on up, just name and address if you could real quick?
Betty Thomas, two zero zero eight nine Herzog. I have a question regarding what Marcy was talking about, the warranty. If I understood when the man was here, um, the warranty starts when the contract is signed?
It's once it, they, uh, approve it, complete it, right?
Once they approve it, shouldn't it start when they pour it?
Well, it's gotta be approved by the engineer, the engineer comes back out, looks at it because if it's, if something's not right, then he orders them to tear it back out and do it. So once it's finalized, then, then the warranty starts.
Did I understand it right, it's when he, he, they prove that it's sealing properly, so it's already poured at that point. They're testing it, they're doing like deviation runs to see.
Okay, so it's not from when, not when the contract is approved, it's from when the road is approved?
Right, right.
When the road is approved.
Because they have to come out physically, they're taking samples when they show up there to go back and test.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So that's a better.
Because that could be months between those things.
No, no, it's when they start pouring.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Don't do it like Metzger. After, after they pour the, the road, nobody can get in their driveway.
Yeah, well.
Still like that.
I mean, they're gonna, they're gonna do like Bobby said, one side and then the other, I mean, listen, we gotta, we gotta pay a little bit of price to carry groceries to get a road done, but. Go ahead, step on up, sir.
If you guys caught it with that engineer said about the warranty?
Yeah.
That since it was an industry-wide problem, that they didn't, they didn't, uh, honor the warranty at all anyways. He said there was scaling prior to the year.
Right.
And they still didn't do anything, he said try to sue them, you know? I don't know if you guys caught that, but so warranty is gonna be nothing. If, if we buy an extra warranty, I don't know, you know, are they gonna stick up or are they gonna say, hey, it's a cement problem?
And that's what we need to find out with the warranty also, is what it's gonna cover because he's initially told me, uh, it doesn't cover the scaling, so. Because it's structurally still fine.
Right, and then I, it was strange because I, then I heard him say that it did cover the scaling when another resident asked, so. I was a little, little confused.
Isn't like in Park, they said that they wanted it cup, she doesn't, she wasn't, oil and park, so they wanted it.
But that would be something we have to look at as a cost effective, if it's three percent of a million dollars, is that worth?
I mean, something that might be a little more, uh, asphalt.
Well, I, it's funny you mention it too.
It's so much easier to maintain, you follow, you can cut saw, you know, you can cut sand wherever you need to.
What she did in Gibraltar, because all their roads were, uh, asphalt.
So, well, let me, since you brought up this point, uh, I did reach out to the engineers also and I got some things. Uh, this is cement versus asphalt, okay? This is durability versus longevity. Concrete pavements last longer than asphalt's lifespan, exceeding thirty years with minimal maintenance. They're resistant to weathering, wear and damage, obviously, blah, blah, blah. Uh, asphalt has a shorter lifespan, fifteen to twenty years, and is prone to more distress like cracking, rotting and potholes. Maintenance requirements, concrete requires less frequent maintenance compared to, to asphalt and can withstand heavy traffic loads and environmental stress better. Uh, environmental resistance, concrete performed better in terms of environment resistance, especially to moisture, uh, degradation in extreme temperatures. Asphalt is more susceptible, sus- susceptible to water infiltration, it can soften extreme heat leading to rotting and deformation. Uh, traffic load capacity, concrete is generally better at handling heavier traffic loads without significant deformation. Cost of a life cycle, uh, concrete has higher initial insulation costs compared to asphalt, but it's a longer lifespan and lower maintenance over the, uh, the whole, cost effective over the long run. Uh, skid resistant and safety, concrete pavements can provide better skid resistance, particularly when they are textured or grooved. Uh, this is, is improved for vehicle safety. Um, there's a couple other ones that were not a, a big deal, but last one would be suitability for local roads. Concrete is often more suitable for local roads that experience heavier consistent traffic loads. Uh, asphalt may be preferred for lower traffic roads due to its lower initial cost and quicker insulation. However, time increased maintenance cost, same kind of thing. So those are some comparisons I had asphalt to, between the two, because I've seen it on Facebook, people are mentioning, why not asphalt, that kind of thing.
Yeah, but one is cheaper.
Sure.
It is, much cheaper.
Up front.
Up front, and then the thing is with concrete, you guys are saw cutting sections. And every saw cut area, I guess where it starts popping right off.
Right.
It starts popping right there, now you got, now you got a pothole building up.
Sure.
And what you do, it just takes those crumbling pieces and keeps dragging them along and breaking them even further.
Right, so I just thought that was good information too.
Like I said, if you're, if you're doing concrete, you have an area that's bad, you replace that entire slab.
Right.
To where, hey, we have an area that's maybe only a three by three, and we just saw cut that three by three area, replace it, back it down, and we can seal it around the edges.
Sure.
Now you don't longer have that water steeping in and it's secure and sealed. That's my personal opinion, but.
If it's that good, why wouldn't everybody do it?
What's the other thing?
I mean, this is the subdivision, right, and we're talking about subdivision.
Well, nobody else is doing it either though, so.
I could say, is that living in Arizona? We do a lot of things in Arizona.
Arizona's a whole.
Well, the weathering in Michigan is a lot different than Arizona with the salt and the extreme cold. If you have a question, come on up, sir, come on up and, uh, name and address. Yeah.
Uh, just a comment on the PS four, Jesse Robertson, uh, two zero one four seven Metzger, so my street isn't quite as atrocious as my neighbors here.
Yours was done in twenty sixteen.
Yeah, it still looks okay.
Yeah.
Comparison. Um, one of my comments was is that while there are a lot of the, um, attractive points of using cement or concrete over asphalt is that, part of it comes to mind is that some of those selling points of, uh, cement roads are mostly, seem to be based upon, I guess, how the mixes used to be and if this new, uh, was it four thousand PSI mix? If that's the new reality, then maybe it might be worth, you know, evaluating that in terms of does, does that comparison still hold up? If this is, if there's nothing that we can do, we can't get the old mix if it turns out or, and that's like our new reality and we would have to find a way to deal with it.
Okay. Okay, anybody else, please come on up, come on up, Larry. You gotta stand up, read up like everyone else.
I gave them my address, I'll give you, how's Five Woodburn Street?
Uh, I'm here, uh, because I get my neighbors, there's only, everybody know where Woodburn Street is? Okay.
I don't think so.
Apparently, I've heard from somebody I know, by the way, the best mayor I've ever seen in Rockwood.
Yeah, right.
Seriously, and I'm a good judge of character. Um, a couple things, we've been here for years, I've been here for thirty-five, forty, I built my house back there. And it's been a good street, the city's been good, they use the, the maintenance guys for years, I've known, they come, they plow it when we need it. And if they don't, we do, I do it and we, well, another neighbor does it now and we have a couple people take care of it. The road has just gone to hell, the drainage isn't, I have a drain by my house, I've been there thirty-five, forty years. It's never been unclogged and I've, really now I don't want it unclogged because I think it would, it's plugged up going from my street to the river and then my, my foundation is, is going down a little bit. But the, the road is dirty, and, and it's been great. I've heard from someone that we're scheduled to get it coated. The question tonight with me too, there's a couple, is what kind of coating they're putting on there? I heard one thing and then I heard, I hear three or four different things, so I've been kind of appointed to just maybe find out what's going on. I can get there in a second, but the next thing, as you well know, everybody knows, the buses. The buses come in and out, they never came in here two years ago. We have a couple kids in there and one kid's two, three doors down. Now they come in and it's both Flat Rock and Gibraltar, they come, they turn on the street, they pull in a little cul-de-sac, a little cutaway from the metro park, then they back up and they go out and they, and the pits in the road are just astronomical. I go out, they've ground the dirt down so much that if I drive one mile an hour, and I have videos of me driving with the dust going over me. Mr. Vines has the first house and his house gets powdered with dust every day, every time. I mean, not to mention, I think it's nine, somebody might correct me, ten times, the two different cities come in there and I don't know which buses, but there are a couple where the women, and they're women drivers, who drive like idiots. I, I mean, I know the one, I know the one, I'm just talking about the two drivers, I'm not talking about all women. The two women drivers who come in here, they drive in, they come around that corner, they fly in, they throw up all the dirt, pulling it back up and they're side, they're beep, 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 nine times it beeps before they back and stop and they take off. And they don't care. I go down there, we go and fill it, it takes about two, three weeks, rain, it gets all eaten. Mysteriously, a, a, um, what do you call it, a bump, a speed bump appeared on my street. I don't know exactly how it happened, but we were told to remove it. It was removed today, I told me, I noticed it was removed. And it was by authorities and I'm, I was thinking first off, bus drivers, it slows them down. Now, if we went to a school, if we went to a schoolyard, what do they put there? Speed bumps. This slows those bus drivers, when they come around that curve, they slow down and it, I just, it's kind of a marginal bump. It bumps, it goes over, but they don't come there and throw that dust up when they make the next turn into the grass of the metro park property. That being said, uh, I don't care if the speed bumps are or not. But there is an issue and we're just wondering why, they, they used to turn around down the other subdivision and why do we have both the cities coming in there now nine times a day?
Did you call the school district?
Huh, we've gone, we, they, I don't, I don't get involved in that, but the people have called and they get like nothing. And the one bus driver says, basically showed, flipping it off saying, too bad, we're gonna do what we want. And we, when we complained about it, it got worse, then they just kind of aggravate you. They'll pull in the middle road, I'll pull out, mo- most of them, like I said, I don't know how many bus drivers are, but there was two that are just annoying. Did they used to stop on Hero River Drive? Yeah, they always stopped at Hero River Drive. When did that change? Uh, I don't know, a year ago, he'll, he'll tell you, he lived on the corner.
When I started complaining about it.
Okay.
For the safety of the kids, I've got video on my phone still to this day.
Okay.
Them pulling a car off the Rockwood sign in our front yard that happened an hour after our kids were picked up off that bus stop. They would have run, that car would have went and moved those kids over, but they were standing up to our Hero River Drive right where that car went on the road. And so I come down here, I talk to the old mayor, I talk to the police chief, police, uh, police chief Randy and see if they could come down and monitor the bus, I even gave him the schedules of every single bus that came down there. I've yet to see a Rockwood police car come down there and do anything about, they come down after all the buses were running, but not while they were running, and I gave them the schedule of the times that they came by.
Okay, well, they're legally allowed to be on the road though, right? I, I, I had to say, I don't blame the Rockwood police. Yeah, there's, there's nothing to stop them from. I mean, they're, they can't just sit there. And I, I probably know what it's like to give a police driver a ticket.
Right.
That's, that's state law.
State law, well, it needs to be, like I said.
They, but they never.
There's ten buses a day go in and out of there.
Okay, so you're saying it would be better if they stopped at Hero River Drive? Yeah, stop. At the end of the road there? Yeah.
No, I, I would say.
He's saying go in.
I, I would say it's better if you're gonna keep using the road.
Okay.
To turn the buses around, put the speed bomb back in, like Larry was saying.
I, I, it was better when they, it was better when they were on Hero River Drive.
Twenty miles an hour, all the way down to the front of our house. And then when they stop, the whole cloud keeps on going down crazy.
Well, let's start with that. Well, let's get, we can get back to our coating. A seal coat.
Is there a sidewalk that continuously goes out to where the bus stop used to be?
There's no sidewalk, no, no.
And legally, so I work in school, I'm a teacher, not bus driver, but I do know that we, we have. We have lots of questions from here.
Thirty years, there's never, we had kids there for thirty years, they walked down two houses and got in a bus.
But what I, all I'm saying is, I work at Chapman, so we have kids that live literally just a couple houses down from Chapman. They get picked up by the bus and they have to be dropped off at their house because they don't have a sidewalk. At a certain age, by law, they're allowed.
That was my next question.
Which used to be illegal to back a bus up to the student, but now they made it, they, they frown against it, but these, they pull in and they back up an entire house down.
They actually come down three houses and back up through two houses and make that turn. That was my next question, is there's, there's probably some state law stipulation for that. Yeah. Because like my disabled daughter has to be picked up at the house, you know? Yeah, well, they, I just, they never did it, but that's not my major thing, the major thing is, what are we talking about, the, the original coating, that's it. Bobby, can you speak on that? It's gonna be like, uh, Woodruff?
Woodruff, we're gonna go back to back, you know, it's just tar, chipstone, we're gonna do it two years in a row and get a nice baseball. Is it the, you're talking about Woodruff, down toward Flat Rock when you go in here, that kind of flat, kind of a tar look? It's not ground up asphalt or anything, powdering. It's just.
What they did from the bridge all the way to Olmstead, right?
Yeah, like.
On, on Woodruff? Yeah, like, like a blacktop, yeah, smooth, not dusty, not rocky. Yes, all blacktop, that's what they're gonna do. Yeah. This summer, spring or summer, right?
And if we're gonna go back to back.
Then now we're depending on the contractor because they work out of town a lot, right?
What do you mean back to back? I'll do it two years in a row, get a nice baseball, because it's, it's just tar, chipstone and tar.
Exactly, I mean, we used to put gravel there all the time, we'd plow it and it all in the front of my house. Nope, no, we talked about this. Yeah, well, I didn't want to say that. No, it's, it's fine, you're a resident, you're complaining, it's fine. But you, you don't have a timeline that you're gonna reach out to them?
Nope, they're gonna come down and do us in Flat Rock same time.
Okay. Are we talking a month, a week, three months? I'll have Bobby reach out, uh, tomorrow, let's see if we can get an answer, because like I said, they work out of town a lot, is what I'm told. So when they're this way, then they do all the jobs, Flat Rock and us at once. Thank you very much and I'll never be back. No, you're welcome, no.
Come back any time.
Take care, I'm going home.
Anybody else? Please, now's the time. Okay, number seven B. So the motion done, or there's a motion to untable this in which we've had our conversation. Um, so I guess we move on to option B. Would be to bid the award for the Olmstead Road.
Make that motion. Good work.
And so that's, this bid, this bid will include the warranty, no warranty?
We're just doing the Olmstead right now.
I know, that's what I'm asking, I'm asking about the warranty first.
You wanna know about a warranty for Olmstead also, right?
Yes, I asked, I asked that at the last meeting, yeah, so, so there.
So, the warranty fee, the number that I was given is three to five percent of the contract price would be between like eight, thirteen thousand dollars to have. And that was.
Just for that section.
Engineers were still checking with our bond attorneys on that, but that was the rough number that they gave.
And do we have, uh, uh.
Beyond, well, on the city, that would not be part of the share of the, of the grant.
And uh, um, do we have a list, a comprehensive list of what the warranty covers specifically?
It would be an extension of the twelve, twelve months, it would just last twenty-four months, so it would be the same warranty that would be on the regular contract that's extended for another twelve months.
And then not, it'd be a year, additional year?
Additional year, two years.
Thirteen grand.
Yeah, I mean.
High end thirteen grand and that's just from Candace to the church, past the school.
I, I understand, yeah, this, I, I'm so thankful and grateful that Rockwood was awarded this grant money. I'm just, again, concerned about putting down road and then it, you know, and then it crumbles, so.
After hearing that, what does the public think? Uh, about that warranty, is that something to see, you wanna spend money on?
I think they, they want more specifics on what the warranty is actually covering for than, just like, oh, there's, there's a word warranty on it.
Yeah.
If it's, yeah, I was gonna say the same thing, and scaling's gonna be part of this and, and the warranty's not gonna cover scaling.
Right.
Then you're wasting your money as far as.
Right, and he was saying also, it's a, it's, everybody has this, this.
Doesn't, should, should matter if the product's defective.
Right.
If the warranty should cover the effect, doesn't matter whose fault it is, who's giving the warranty.
Right.
And who's ever given the warranty, that's like, is their responsibility to see to it, that it's repaired. You know, regardless of it's the quality of the material or if all it's glue used bad material.
Right.
But you gave the warranty, you're responsible for it, you know, so.
And the contractor.
If you can't give warranty on a new product, you know.
Right.
Contractors have more hands, it's the, it's industry standard.
It is, yes, that's the whole problem.
You have a warranty that no one's covering.
Right, and then we lose out, so we pay for a warranty and yet they're not gonna cover it, right, cause it's.
Ricky, do you, did you ever get a, or do you have a timeframe that we lose this bid if we don't approve it?
So, the, the bid is.
Good for.
Ninety days is.
Okay.
Is that a decision would have to be made, which there is an option to um, reject all the bids, that's what I was saying um, earlier. And then it would have to be bid out again, understanding that that would be additional cost for the engineers and such. And then potentially would drive away contractors who have already bid on the job once.
Right.
So just keeping that in mind, but there is a ninety day period um, program on this.
That we have to accept it, okay.
That we would have to.
And did, oh, I'm sorry.
One other thing though, uh, the gentleman up there said it makes a difference what time of year you pour.
Mm-hmm. Olmstead's slated to be.
October and November.
Now Olmstead's slated to be poured in the middle of June right after school gets out, that's the date.
They're not gonna cover it, I mean, they're just gonna say, well, assault it, you know.
Well, in Michigan, no matter what, six months from whenever is gonna be.
Sure, go ahead Marcy, you had a question?
Um. The time period for work.
Yeah.
Is during the summer when school is out.
Yeah.
So there are stipulations in the bid package that state that it cannot be started until school gets out and has to be done before school is back in session.
June to August.
Time for, for the Olmstead Road project.
We put that in there so it'll be done while school was out specifically.
So that it didn't interfere with the traffic for school.
Yep, so it'll be done this summer.
And then my next, my next question or just next point was that he did state, if I understood correctly, that we could specify which we could ask them to use a specific uh, supplier. If that was something that we were interested in as, as, as a team to say, well, you know, here's the results of whatever, if, it. So that's not dictated by um, the, the grant money, like saying, well, you have to use this specific.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think that's what we can ask those questions.
My fact is bid though.
Right.
Sure.
Bid might go up, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I.
So are you asking?
Five dollars from this guy and this guy's fifty bucks, so you're gonna pay.
Right.
Well, yeah, you do get what you pay for sometimes.
As a pub, as a public, if I can ask this generally, does everybody want more questions answered before we approve the bid? Do you want these, do you wanna know how much it's gonna cost, what it covers, things like that for this section of Olmstead? I mean, how much does it ma- yeah, I, I, I wanna get a consensus because I don't get to talk to people.
I just have a question, um, if, do we have examples of roads that have the new
Yes.
Four thousand PSI that are good, or are they all just not really working out? Because if we don't have anything that's newer, that's supposed to be under the new standards, that's holding up, what, how are we, why would we even think this would hold up? Like, what, on what good faith would we have that there's some miraculous is gonna change and it's all of a sudden gonna be.
Well, some of those pictures were the new PSI that.
Well, if, if, if I may, um, I don't know if you, were you at the workshop here, that was, that.
Before the meeting?
Before this.
Yeah, she's been here.
Okay, so um, again, we were all encouraged to, to take a look, you know, we were given this information as a team to say, okay, if you wanna go here's the road, you can go look at them, I did go look at them, some other members of council did as well. And it is subjective, I'm not an engineer, so I don't, again, I can't say, well, you know, this road is great, this road is not.
The roads you had up there were all the newer roads.
They were all, there was.
The one that was Masina.
Yes, so there were thirteen, twelve or thirteen roads that I went to view and the only one that immediately stuck out to me that, I mean, I, again, I did, I was loo- I was looking with skeptical eyes, I wanted to find the worst of the worst and I could not find anything, again, I, I did ask for the specific pour dates of this because maybe that was done in June or maybe it was done.
Was it over, was it over a year old, so.
Well, we were told they were done last season, so again, I don't know exactly what that means. Um, I'd love to know more about that, I did ask about that, to, you know, exactly what are those dates, um. So um, I didn't get that information um, yet, but um, it's a great question, yeah.
I, I guess, pertaining to that then, I would, I would, is there any way to find out if different concrete companies have different, even though they say they're, they're all the same standard, if, if we called them, would they say, can they, can they define their mix is, is it sent in different about it?
I think the engineer said, didn't he, that the mix is a, their standard, it's, it's, you know, standard due to state of Michigan. That four thousand PSI is a standard mix.
Right, well.
Right, another supplier.
But maybe they're doing it, like each one has a different supplier or something, I don't know.
To.
It was just worth, if, if that was, that did look better and so, a little, maybe a little warranty, if the price was a little higher, but you had a better chance of a better company, I mean, that's worth it.
Um, a couple years ago, you, um, or maybe last year, we were sent the breakdown of, of the mix from one particular, it was G V Cement, the, the, the breakdown. And from what I understand, that the, that does vary, the percentages of what they add does vary from supplier to supplier, yes, the bake, base mix is the same, but that's the point of having different suppliers, is that there are different things offered.
Yes.
Um, the, the re- that looked amazing was just poured last summer, so we haven't made it a year yet. Candace was beautiful after a year, it was just after the year, so. Even Masina was a good supplier, but we haven't seen that long term yet.
Right, and like the engineer also said, they're on site and they're pouring, taking those samples and testing too, you know, they're right there. You know, taking those samples and testing, but.
Right, so that, that test is, again, they're not worried about the top, they're just worried about the strength and we, we understand that Candace is not gonna fall apart down below, but unless we're the, the excuse of the swamp land, you know, comes through again, but um, we really don't know the full life of that four thousand PSI yet. Um, but we're in a, rocked in a hard spot right here, cause we don't wanna lose grant money that they worked hard to get, that's hard. And it's like free money, you know, it's hard.
Yeah.
Well, half free, yes, yeah.
Well, that, you know.
And I, I've been told this and I, years ago, I was told, um, uh, I don't have, I'm not privy to specific instances, but things like this were questioned and maybe John could even speak to this, that certain, you know, certain contractors probably bid our city because it's small and, you know, uh, they can do it, there's other contractors that won't touch us because we don't have a lot of money, we're not gonna spend tons of money and we wait on grant money, but when we start shooing these contractors away, they're not gonna come back and rebid these jobs, and I was told that happened years ago. I don't know if you know any more on that or not, but, you know, they just stopped saying, we're not, you're gonna nitpick every little thing, it's kinda what they said, we're not coming back to rebid that job and then before long they weren't even getting contractors to come do bid jobs here, so. Again, small aspect of everything because we're, it's our money we're spending, but just so it's out there in the air. Yes, sir.
Is there any way you can find out who poured Silvania? Uh, that's a Monroe County road, it goes from Southern River Drive over to Fleury Road. It's the one that all the gravel trains use, that's a pristine road and it's been on for, I think, around ten years and there isn't a crack in it.
Yeah, but I think it's the quality they were using back then and now we're being, so this is what we use.
I don't know, but I, I mean, it, it came with scurbs and everything, it was in the house on.
The street I grew up on Adams, it was, it, it had, you could see the little stones in it.
Right.
But it lasted forever, but that was a quality they used back then.
Well, I grew up in Wyandotte too, so I'm, the streets are still going stronger, my mom's house, but.
Yep.
Um, I guess what I'm hearing is that there's, people want more questions answered. Is that first statement? Before we go to bid on this, approve this bid? Are we look, is that what you're asking, are you looking to table this again?
Um, I, 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 I'm, I'm torn because again, I don't want the city to lose any money at all.
Right.
And, you know, it was brought to my attention, you know, a, a scaling road is better than no road, but again, I, I that's frustrating for me to, you know, to.
Not table it.
To, to uh, to move forward.
Not table it, approve it, did it done, start going, we're, let it be the.
Move forward.
I mean, that, that, that's my, that's where I'm at, because I've done some research too and I've listened to the engineers and everybody, we're talking about a section of road from Candace to the school, you know. Um, but, again, that's just for.
Let's do it.
So, well, it's on, it's on, let's take a vote on it then, do we, do we have a second on that?
Yes.
Okay, there's a second on it, so we could take a vote on the, the motion to bid this to, to the, the contractor.
Merker?
Yes.
Griswick?
Yes.
Krampen?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yeah.
Wosner? Cox?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, the bid is awarded. This will start, they'll start pouring when school lets out, that's the plan, okay? All right, um, we're gonna move on to our great administrators report, Mrs. Trush, she's been great.
Good evening, uh, we have a couple of items on the agenda for today. The first is our professional service agreement for assessing. Um, we do have two different contracts that I sent everybody to review and to look at. Um, I'm asking for a motion to approve the, to move forward the contract either with, in the F U O C O assessing or W C A assessing.
I made the motion to approve the assessing professional service agreement with Asta F U O C O assessing consultant from May first twenty twenty-five to May first twenty twenty-six.
Support. Cox?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Krampen?
Yes.
Merker?
Yes.
Wosner?
Yes.
Griswick?
Yes.
Bennett?
Okay, they'll be awarded against the F U O C O.
Uh, the second is a, um, a proposal that was sent out to council for um, building department. Uh, Sam Woodrick from McKenna was going to try to be present, unfortunately he is sick, so he's not able to be with us tonight. I don't know if there is questions that maybe I could answer or if council feels comfortable moving forward with um, with a motion to, to look into a contract negotiation with them.
I support a motion.
I, I, oh, you support, motion support. Um, could you just explain a little bit more what this is, um, and what we're looking at, what we're, what we're bidding on?
So, um, we recently had our building department clerk resign. So the building clerk takes care of all permit and licensing among a slew of other ordinance and other duties like that, um. We decided to look not only at uh, posing the job to the public for applicants, but also to look into having a private company come in around our building department that would cover all the building clerk duties along with all our inspector's duties, they would help with our planning and zoning, um, uh, meetings, um, so they would call, cover the full scope of building department for the city, um, in the.
And find things in the processes that were falling apart, that we are missing. Because I, I did call Gibraltar and I asked a few other places and uh, I heard nothing but good about McKenna because they've actually, they have good processes, they have good uh, database that they use and they stay on top of the process that we're losing out on. And that they've been losing out on, so they see a good, and they also support them when they need the support when they're talking to different building productions that are gonna be happening and they help them through all that, so it's it sounds like it's a good beneficial thing and I've also thought that there might be a chance that we'd have Tara, who's familiar with our city twice out of the month or week, to be in our, in our, here as well.
Yeah.
So they give us a familiarity person that's already knows our city based on that and, and can, keeps our processes flowing the way they need to flow.
That has been a request of mine, that if this moves forward, that, you know, Tara could come back and be the clerk working at our department and it also provides additional support, they have a very large team that has seen, I'm assuming, very large scope of projects. So it will provide additional support for our building department, um, you know, we have a couple of larger projects that are looking to get underway this summer, um, I, I, my recommendation would be to, to look at a contract with them.
Right.
Okay, so to be clear, your recommendation is for McKenna and then also to request Tara to return back to the office?
Yes, I mean, she is working for McKenna, um, yes, I have made that request, there is, um, obviously that's a conversation between administration and McKenna, you know, on staffing.
Sure.
So that's one of the things that, you know, we would have control over of who would be, to an extent, staffed in our office.
And can you speak to the cost of this as um, comparative to what we're currently paying for this position?
So, um, right now, the building department is actually running at a deficit per our, um, no, in our audit. So we are not covering our full costs of our building department, which includes not only Tara, but also some other ancillary costs and also our, our inspectors. Um, the proposal from McKenna would be that we, they would charge us ninety-five percent of the building permit and licensing fees. So every month that we would run a report out of our software that would tell them how much we've bought in, we would, then, they would then invoice us and we'd pay ninety-five percent of that, so we'd actually be making a five percent profit off of our building department. Um, they do have some recommended, you know, changes and they will help us with things like any ordinance changes we need to make and things of that nature, any of the um, fees would still have to be approved by council, so, you know, we would maintain that um, that right and that, that decision-making, so, but they would make recommendations to help us improve our, our ordinances and our fee structure.
So if I could, uh, I think you and I had talked about the statement of uh, the building department's not supposed to be really making any money, they should be breaking even and we're at a loss right now, so with this company, we would be hopefully breaking even and that, being at a loss anymore and then they're red for the city and their budget, that's one of the goals, so. Yeah.
We dealt with them many, many years in a row and.
Right, for years we've been losing out on it, yeah, so.
Thank you.
All right.
Bennett?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Merker?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Krampen?
Yes.
Wosner?
Yes.
Griswick?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, the attorney, is there no report? Uh, I'm gonna cover anything I have, just under new business real quick. Um, so we'll start with old business, Mr. Wosner, any old business, Mr. Krampen?
Yeah, I do, I'd like to thank the Lions Club for the Easter icon and the police for providing the car for my granddaughter to go through.
Yep. Okay, uh, Mrs. Merker?
No, I don't.
Mrs. Griswick?
Um, yes, I, the, I wanted to ask about details about the tea party, I didn't know if um, Barb could let us know, are there tickets still available, could you come speak in?
Thank you, Marcy, for that question.
Yeah.
Um, the, the tea party, yes, uh, the tea party will be held on April twenty-seventh, that's a Sunday between two and four, um, the doors will open at one thirty. Um, tickets are still available, you can go online, um, and I think that, um, uh, let's see, I think it's, uh, we do have a flyer that's, that's online on our, on our Facebook. The cost is thirty dollars, um, if you can buy a table, a table seats six people and that is a hundred and sixty dollars, uh, children are fifteen dollars.
And the location of it?
And the location is the Rockwood Community Center.
Okay, and the thirty dollars, I, I asked this before, but just again, where does that, what does that money go towards?
That will go toward uh, work, well, our, uh, the organization, the historical society, so.
So thirty dollars per person, correct, and how much for the table you said?
And the table is a hundred and sixty, so there's a little bit of a discount that's there. And the table is a hundred and sixty, so there's a little bit of a discount that's there. So, but we still have. No, you don't.
You can send more there, so it's cheaper.
So we do have, we still have room, so I encourage everyone to attend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
That was it for me, thank you.
Mr. Bennett, no, Mr. Johnson?
No.
Okay, we'll move on to, uh, new business, Mr. Wosner? Mrs. Merker? Mrs. Griswick?
Yes, the beautification, um, committee is having a meeting May first at six P M, um, here at City Hall, second, uh, floor in the community room. Um, we are getting ready to plant, um, so we're looking for volunteers, hands, hands-on, um, to help us plan and plant, um, which will be coming quicker than we know, uh, realize, I should say. Um, we did already buy some self-watering, um, pots for the city hall. Um, those were delivered to my house a couple of days ago, so we're excited about that because we were having an issue with watering plants around the city and, um, we had some failures, so we would love to have you, um, there for that event. Um.
Would your beautification really take any donations, if anybody had any old stuff or?
Yes, um, we would.
Donations, they would love to.
We would love, right now, we are in dire need of lawn bags to clean up the city. Um, we need to clean up our old areas that we planted, um, especially around the clock tower and some of the flower beds that are, that are in the main, uh, four corners there. We, we do need lawn bags, otherwise we, uh, just, we purchase them ourselves out of our own, uh, pocket, so.
Where would they bring any donations? You want them to come to City Hall somewhere else?
If we could work that out, I, I'm not sure. I mean, I could give my address, but I'm not always home, so, um, you know, City Hall would be a good place to drop them off, maybe if we could put a box in the lobby.
Do you beat it? No?
No. So.
Do you have, do you have a suggestion, Vicki? I think that's my two.
That would be fantastic. Okay, yeah, um, and again, it's spring cleaning, if you're cleaning out your garage and you see some large pots, you know, I'd say, you know, taller than s- twelve inches, we could use those as well. We would ask that if you donate them to us to allow us to keep them because we likely might spray paint them or, or resurface them. Um, so I did wanna mention that. The other thing is, there's, um, there's a couple, there's three Rockwood churches that are participating in an event on May first as well in Flat Rock. Um, it's the National Day of Prayer. It will be held at the, uh, Rockwood, or I'm sorry, the Flat Rock, um, Community Center at three P M. Um, so we're thankful to have, um, so many churches in Rockwood participating in that. All are welcome. It's actually a, a Down River event, um, just being held, uh, sponsored at Flat Rock, in the city of Flat Rock, so. That was it.
Mr. Bennett?
No.
Okay, I, real quickly, all I have is, um, we have vacancies on the board review and the zoning board, so if you know anybody, anybody, please submit an application. Next meeting, uh, we're gonna have some good news about park funding. I'll leave it at that. Um, I wanted to mention the marshmallow drop that the Wayne County Parks are doing, um, April eighteenth, which is this Friday, nine A M. in Elizabeth, uh, Park in Trenton, is a marshmallow drop. And then they're doing one at eleven A M. at, uh, Nankin Mills Park in Westland. And then on the same date, uh, that's the, uh, sensory marshmallow drops, so it's quieter, they say, maybe for special needs, things like that. Um, remind everybody, the Memorial Day Parade is the twenty-sixth, Memorial Day at ten A M. I hope to see everybody out there so we can line our streets and show our pride. Uh, I wanted to also thank the Lions Club, uh, for all they did for the, uh, the Easter egg drop. And this is, um, Dispatcher Appreciation Week and since Gibraltar took over, uh, dispatching, I would like to, uh, tell them thank you and they've done a great job and give them my appreciation for, uh, for all that they've done for you residents and us residents of the city.
Absolutely.
And that's it. So with that, I would look for a adjournment.
Make the motion adjourned.
Wosner?
Yeah.
Krampkin?
Yes.
Merker?
Yes.
Griswick?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Thank all of you for coming, I appreciate it. Thank you so much for voicing your concerns. Appreciate that.